Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is a city commission meeting for February 1st, 2016. I think I'll start off by saying, for those of you that maybe got a little snippet of some of some live TV ahead of us getting started, you saw Mrs. Slaton's third grade class sitting behind our bench, a little bit of a civic lesson there. Thank you guys for being here. We'll start off today with invocation. Chase, would you like to lead us?
Yep, if you all pray with me. Lord heavenly father, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together as a commission and as a community to to serve you, Lord, and we just pray your blessings on these young people that we have joining us tonight and pray your guidance on the decisions that we make for our community. We just lift this up in your Son Jesus' holy name. Amen.
We have pledged allegiance going to be led by Mrs. Slaton's third grade class. You guys want to come up and lead us in pledge allegiance? Also, I think you're going to get a microphone. You want to tell us, tell us your name and what you like best about El Dorado.
My name is Steven, my name is Steven Ford. My favorite thing about El Dorado is that, that the, the police station and the fire department.
My name is Tucker Morgan and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the YMCA.
My name is Madison Ray Alken and my favorite thing about El Dorado is um, the um, sports, the sport, the youth group sports that El Dorado provides us.
My name is Haley Oven. My favorite thing about El Dorado is the bike path.
My name is Kaden Cooper and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the bowling alley.
My name is McCord Michael and I like that our um, town is safe.
My name is Caitlin Perrell and my thing, favorite thing about El Dorado is that there are, that there is a lake for people to use.
Nice. Okay, you want to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's cool to be a bulldog.
Man, I'm a bulldog too. Good luck, guys.
There you go.
I don't think I've ever heard that before.
Right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Slaton and your third grade class. That is good.
You were a bulldog?
I was. We were the Jets then, not the Bulldogs. Same place. Okay, now the next thing on our agenda is proclamation. Having none, we'll move to personal appearance. Have Scott Rickard for an annual update on the engineering, building, and zoning.
Hello there. Give you a little update, 2015 year review of what's been going on with the engineering First it all starts off with our mission statement and I'd like to, and I know all the guys over there and the gals, and really try to make this a reality for everyone that steps through our door, every home we visit in town. And it's, all projects have a common requirement of taking a concept through completion, growth, and continued improvements. Our future, and we will strive to provide comprehensive and responsible services that are in the best interest of El Dorado. We have three divisions over there, engineering, building, and planning and zoning. We'll start off with the engineering side and what, what we're responsible for over there is implement overseeing the extensions or major rehabilitation of the city's infrastructure, stormwater, floodplain administration, mapping of all the city's infrastructure, you know, as well as city-owned property, any data that we may need maps on zoning, GIS. We have a GIS system with the, which is a geographical information system. We help a lot with economic development activities. We play a role with El Dorado Inc. in becoming our, involved early on with interested developers, projects that may be happening. Some of those that we've worked on the last year have been the transload facility, application to KDOT, and some commercial developments you've seen around town. We've worked heavily with QuickTrip in the last year to make that project happen. There was a lot of issues with that site that had to be taken care of. Traffic engineering, so stop signs, speed limits around town, site plan review for any new developments in town, and we work as a coordination agent between the utility companies. I'm just going to hit some projects real quick that are, are still ongoing but got their start last year really, and some of them are already completed. Works underway on the CDBG sewer project in southwest El Dorado and going through and taking old clay sewer pipes and putting that brand-new white HDP pipe you see in it and reaming the old clay out of the way and connecting all of those homes with new sewer taps that we, that we come across. The paving of Tuanda is finally wrapped up. The project in total was around a $1.2 million project. We used about 3,500 tons of asphalt on it, so one of our bigger projects of the year. It's nice to see that done. I think we've heard a lot of positive comments about it since it's been completed. Resurfacing streets in town, this is our major rehabilitation that our department will oversee, inspect, administer the projects. We were able to accomplish quite a lot this year. Of course, the resurfacing of Central, you all are aware of, from Summit to Taylor and then Griffith to the Walnut River here east of town. We also mill and overlay pine from Emporia to Summit, High Central to Ash, Emporia Central to Pine, Topeka Central to First, and then also K Springs and Atchison was an old 1920s era concrete road that engineering worked with Public Works and Public Works crews actually did the work replacing the concrete, so it's a pretty nice finished product. We were able to keep the cost down quite significantly because that was a benefit district-involved project where those property owners were responsible for the cost of the curb and go to the, in their new drive roads. Wrapped up two new developments in town, the Chris 9th Edition and Belmont Heights 3rd Edition. With Chris 9th, that gave us another 21 lots. There's three homes up out there now. Belmont Heights gave us another 15. And actually, there's a house going up right now in Belmont Heights, so that's good to see. Central and Topeka, GI is a geometric improvement of that intersection. For a number of years, we were seeing more and more accidents occur at the entrance off Central to the hospital. And with Central narrowing down to a four-lane road from Topeka to Summit, we tried to come up with a way where we could add a safe turning, turning lane into the hospital. We were able to accomplish that by putting a taper in just to the west of Topeka. Along with that project, we were able to tackle a problem that we've had for a few years with wet weather events, a sanitary sewer that was down the center of Central Avenue was really old and flowed at capacity, really when it was wet outside about 50% all the time. So we were able to go through there and pipe, ream that pipe out and put a new 12-inch sewer line down the middle of Central. With the geometric improvement project, in total, that was about a $422,000 project. But we were fortunate enough to get federal funds in the city's portion of that, it was only around $40,000. The pipe bursting, we put in about 1,100 foot of new 12-inch, and that was a $240,000 project that we will wrap into our state revolving loan as part of the CDBG sewer project. This was a project that first started out as a issue with the break of the 24-inch raw water line from El Dorado Lake to the water plant, right on the bank of the West Branch of the Walnut River. And it ended up allowing us the opportunity to take care of some problems, at least upstream, with having a contractor in town making that repair into the Walnut River to go ahead and get, fix a single point of failure we had out close to El Dorado Lake of the crossing of the Walnut River. When that new channel was dug, it was determined at that time to only put one pipe crossing the river there, so we had our 36-inch and our 24-inch go down to one single 36-inch. So we didn't have true redundancy in our system, so we were able to accomplish this while that contractor was in town making, fixing up the, the break that was underneath the Walnut River and working with Frontier Refinery on some of the issues with some water hammer in that area, so. You see the improvements to Central and Haberhill. We were quite involved with that, working with QuickTrip and KDOT on, on that project and getting that cleaned up, and it was quite an inconvenience for a while, but it did create a little wider opening in there for trucks, trucks turning north on Haberhill Road. We were able to wrap up the traffic signal at Haberhill and 6th. That was paid completely by federal funds that were allotted to the city of El Dorado. We exchanged those funds through KDOT, so that was about a $135,000 project that was completely funded by the federal dollars. Really saw a need for that signal out there as our industrial park has just grown and grown and almost near capacity. There was a lot of issues with shift changes as well as commercial truck traffic trying to navigate that intersection. Hit a little bit here on the building division and responsible for the administration and enforcement of the city, building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and municipal codes. Had a, that, this division had a good year this year. We had quite a significant number of, of roofs replaced. In fact, over 2,000 residential roofs were replaced at a value of $15 million and 101 commercial roofs at a value of $3.7 million. In that, our permits for 12 new homes. We had a flurry at the end of the year of permit applications for new homes, kind of concern of the NRP running out, but um, so that did jump our total. And six new commercial buildings in there. And as you see, the total number of permits is 2797 for an increased value in El Dorado of over $31 million, and we were able to collect building inspection fees at around Also worked on here with NRP renewal, which you all are very familiar with. Met with the code review committee to talk about code revisions. Land Bank, and that discussion is going to be coming to you soon at a work session when it's available. Building demolition, we continue that front in Mih. Planning and zoning is the last division and really responsible to provide and communicate the framework of what, for guiding the community. In 2015, we processed 10 zone changes and special use permits. There were three variances. Worked on the Plating of the American Legion Connect 2025 Plan, the Core Master Plan, which we're getting going on, and prior, prioritizing comprehensive planning goals. And that's all I have, so if anyone stands any questions?
Questions? Scott? I have a couple.
Yep.
Um, the, the, what, how does, I'm going to, I'm going to assume that the fee, billing permit fee is a bumper year.
Yeah.
What happens with those additional funds?
They go, all funds come into the general fund, just go into the general fund, and so those fees are just part of the general fund in your general fund balance.
Okay.
They're, I think a normal year is about $50,000, and so it'll just show up in your fund balance at the end of the year as unanticipated revenue.
As unanticipated revenue. There is any way to, to dedicate that for something that's engineering-related? Sure there is.
Um, the, you can, you can do that if you'd like. Just, the, we, engineering has a, what we call, we get a refund on projects, so if there's an engineering refund on a project, certain projects are assessed a percentage of the costs for our time involved in the minister inspection, construction staking, whatever it may be. And, and that goes to an equipment fund that helps replace survey equipment or stuff we may need over the years.
Do we make?
As an example.
Right.
Um, when the commission allowed, started allowing the sale of fireworks, part of that rationale was to fund a fireworks display. And so even though you, you couldn't track that dollar from that permit to the fireworks, it's, it's what the commission wanted to do, and so then we put it in a budget. But like, that, that windfall, if you wanted to say, we'd like to use it for X, then it's okay. And then, I mean, it takes three of you, but you can certainly do that and you can certainly earn more money. It's not common particularly, but you certainly have that ability.
Well, and, and I guess, I think we, where I'm headed with this is we've got some demolition fund, I remember right from our budget, we can carry some for, for blighted home or blighted demolition or some, some of that. I didn't know whether it was appropriate, and I, I don't know that we want to get into this discussion tonight.
Sure, sure.
Um, because it just kind of came to me, I don't know whether, I mean, certainly don't want to make a decision on that tonight, but the thought is, my thought is, since we've had that, this bumper year in building permits, is it appropriate to turn it around into, into redevelopment or revitalization efforts?
You, you can absolutely do that. Let us first look and see how all our other lines were.
Yeah.
Um, but the, the big lines were great years. 2015 was a good year for us. So let me report back and then, and you don't, you have been here, but the, that, we have budgeted $15,000 every year for not my whole time, but. Right, eight years. Yeah, and I think it was five before that. It's 13 now. And then, and the commission wanted to make it a point of emphasis, and I think they did that because of what they heard from the community. And so I think it's a, it'd be, you could certainly do it, and we have created a fund for it because we do, you start January 1st with zero, all the money's just in the fund balance, and so we created a fund for building demolition so that if we didn't use the full $15,000, we'd park it in a fund that's budgeted to use all of it. And so would even have the place to put it if the commission wanted to do it.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to have that discussion.
Sure.
If you'd bring us some more information.
Bring us some suggestions on maybe some projects. I'm sure you, I'm sure you've got something in mind. And I think that, that we have, we have, we keep that in mind all the time, and then the other thing, we look for opportunities, and so someone has a property that is getting ready to come under some court or have problems, and they don't really want to fix it, they don't live here, and so we acquire property. That way, when we have the money to react, and so having that money parked so we can take advantage of that kind of thing, I think it'd be, be wonderful, and boast for that kind of deal, and then if the commission wanted to, there are several pieces of property that if we had a fund that was available and the commission approved it, that being able to react to sales is a good.
Some, some of that maybe goes back and forth to land bank discussions as well.
Correct.
So I think as we get closer to that, we, we've certainly seen some opportunities here to inform the discussion. Next question I had was, what's on the horizon for code revisions and updates? Is that, what's the timeline and what's the thought on some of that?
Keep reviewing and, and the thought is to, to make a jump. Not sure which addition yet with the code review committee. We've discussed the property maintenance code, considering bringing that to you all. And really, property maintenance code more or less mirrors our municipal housing code, but there's some, there's some statements in there that, that allow us to track properties that change hands quite often a little better. What we run into now is we will red-tag a property and then instead of taking care of that problem, quick sell, then we're with another owner dealing with the same issues and starting all over again. So I think soon enough, maybe we'll be talking about property maintenance code. We've looked at building codes around the region and where everyone's at. There's a lot of comfort, I think, amongst our tradesmen of what code we're under now, but we don't want to get too far behind. Where the next jump will be significant, we're already 10 years behind, well, 10 years, I mean, we're under the 2006 codes. So something we seriously need to be thinking about and what the right next move is if it's the '09 or, or '14.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Scott?
Is the NEC up, Dan? The NEC is.
'08, isn't it?
Yeah. It's the newest one we have. But still. Yeah. Time, time flies and, and we don't want to get in the position where we were when we adopted the '06 because we were, well, I guess we were under the 97 Uniform Building Code or something.
I think we were like under the '92.
'92.
Yeah, it was.
And mechanical. We're still in our mechanical code, and you know, there was some, some reasons for
that too. I mean, there's, we, if I recall, we made that jump from the uniform to the international code, suite of codes. There was some language in the, in the uniform or in the international mechanical code. I, I don't remember all the details, but there was a reason for not making that jump. There's several, I will say there are several municipalities that are still under the Uniform Mechanical Code and not made the jump to the full suite of international codes.
In, in south-central Kansas, that's true. Eastern Kansas, it's not.
I think it might even still be true, might be changing, but I think it's still true in Wichita.
Right. Wichita, that, especially Uniform Plumbing.
Yeah, Uniform Plumbing is, that's the one I'm thinking of, not Mechanical so much. Uniform Plumbing. So yeah, critical look, I, I don't, I don't disagree that you pay attention to the codes and look at them critically.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
I don't know that the year is as important as what's in it, in my personal opinion.
And I think you have to, you have to understand what's in it and then adopt what's right for your community. And that's, while some cities do adopt it in its entirety with no changes, I'd say that most, most well-managed areas, especially ones that have a lot of discussions with their tradesmen, there's discussion about what's in it. And I think as an example, we don't require as many smoke detectors as the code requires, do we? Not they want one in every bedroom, one in front of every bedroom, one on every floor. No, I'm not sure about that. Oh. But I think. Building officials all over that, so.
Yeah.
So it, you do make them right for your community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Uh, next on our agenda is public comment. Anybody from the audience who should address the commission for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. In your consent agenda is the minutes and appropriations. Everybody, this was sent out to everybody beforehand. Any comments or questions on the minutes or the appropriations? None, I entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Question carries 5-0. Next on our agenda is a KDHE amendment, project number 392, El Dorado Sewer Improvements.
Yes, this amends our original agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for revolving loan to help fund the CDBG sewer project in southwest El Dorado. It, it will take us up to $939,738.91 revolving loan money. The remaining of the project cost, $500,000 will be paid by the CDBG grant. Asking you to consider passing ordinance authorizing and executing the loan agreement.
Okay, any questions from the commission? I entertain a motion.
What's an ordinance number?
1211, G1211.
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance number G1211, an ordinance authorizing the execute, the execution of the First Amendment to the loan agreement between El Dorado, Kansas and the state of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for the purpose of financing a wastewater treatment project, establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the First Amendment to the loan agreement be approved.
So roll call vote?
It's been moved in second, any further discussion?
Second.
Yeah, you seconded. Any further discussion? Any other? Okay. In this, it says establishing a dedicated source of revenue. You know what that is?
Sure. Sewer bills.
Okay, thanks. All right, roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Question carries? Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is the Kansas Moderate Income Housing Program. This agenda item has some effect on a project that I am working on, so I will, I will step down from the bench and Nick as Vice Mayor will, will take over on this discussion.
Okay, agenda item number four, Kansas Moderate Income Housing Program. Who's going to tell us about this one?
Mr. Vice Mayor, commission, the city of El Dorado and El Dorado Inc. applied for the moderate income housing grant and was awarded $90,000. This agenda item is requesting the commission to give us approval for the city manager to sign the agreement.
Okay, and then, so it's $90,000 and then what can we use this for?
The, the $90,000 on this project will be used for the acquisition of property and demolition. The, the grantee is providing about $715,000 of his own funds through either cash, loan, and bank agreements to fund the rest of the project. Really can be used for anything that the developer desires, and he so chose that.
Very good.
Any other questions from the commission?
And this is going to be at where? What, what location in town?
The project will be located. The project will be located in 300 blocks of store. And really, what the city is providing on this project is allowing it to be in our NRP program, which would automatically have been there anyway, would have met those requirements. And then, we will help provide a report, a monthly report to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation on how the project proceeds.
How much money would a person have to do to qualify to rent or buy one of these homes?
How much do they have to make?
Yeah.
There's a moderate income table and I don't know that I brought that with me this evening, I apologize.
It's about $50,000 a year for a family of four.
$50,000.
I think it's actually $52,000, but it's around that number.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
You sure?
Positive.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to sign the grant agreement with the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for the Kansas Moderate Income Housing Program.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. It was closed.
It should have been. Thank you. Who moved in second in that? Who moved in second?
I moved it.
Louis Locke.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. New business is what we have next on our agenda. Anybody have new business to bring from the commission?
Herb, I had a couple phone calls. In our work session, I mean, we didn't take any action, but on the, did we, refresh my memory, did we have a consensus that for 2016, we're not going to change the rates for 2016? They're going to be the same as they were for 2015.
And 2014 and 2013.
And 2013 and 20, okay.
Since you last took action, which seems like it's five or six years ago.
Okay. Well, I thought that's what we decided, or not decided, but talked about, but before I went out on a limb, I thought I better check.
To change those rates that you set five or six years ago when you bought the course, it would have taken action. By not taking any action, you haven't changed anything. And so, if you wanted to do something different, it would take action. And so, I think that we have started collecting money and, but I think the consensus was that the rate structure and the entire cost and expenses, revenue expenses of Prairie Trails, you wanted examined in more detail before you decided, took up what, if anything, you were going to do different.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Couple of questions. Well, actually, one comment and a question. The dip at the intersection of South Denver and Cave Springs has gotten more dippier with Now, I realize my car sits low to the ground, but might have Brad look at that.
And it'll, and it'll be something, probably, Scott, you'll just have to shoot it in because it's just going to be about draining water in.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
And so, that'll...
It drains great, it just, it's kind of worked.
The valley gutter, we want it just nice and smooth. We don't want it to do this. And so, we'll have to check out above and below and then the intersection.
Well, for my entire time of living on the end of South Denver, there's always been, but it's gotten bad. And this is a question. When, when we do things, items with sales tax, do we have signs that say your sales tax dollars at work?
We do. And I don't, we may not put them up every time, but I think we do.
Yeah, most, most of the projects that are really visible, if we have the space, we'll throw, they'll be signed up as a...
They stay up, they're not just up during the project construction or something, they stay up.
We try to keep them up for a while, as long as they're not interfering with anything.
I think there's one.
Do you think, do we use sales tax for the playground at Rock's Park?
No.
That's the one I'm thinking of that we're going to stick up. But we tried to.
Okay. Thank you.
Crossing lines at Haverhill and Central, are they, are they going to be installed on the east side?
I think Brad is working on that a little bit.
And I think he either, I think he's ordered them, I don't know if I've ever heard if they're in. The, the, they're working. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I know that the plan is to get them and get them in, that system can do that.
Okay. I was just asked about it, so I was checking it out on it. That's all I have.
Commissioner Locke?
I was just going to share, I had two phone calls expressing praise and gratitude to Chief Moody and the Fire Department for their efforts with the grass fires this past week. Two people just saying that they were extremely professional and kind and willing to work with everyone and were working their butts off. I'll just say that. So, anyways, thanks to them. And then, I'll do this one for Chapin, but that's why I'm thinking about it. When it warms up, I know we had, I think, the Boy Scouts took care of some trash, we maybe made a small donation and they did that with entrance to town. We might do that again when it warms up and weather's, I've just noticed it's kind of starting with all the wind piling up out there, but I thought that was a great deal when we did that last year, so just while I'm thinking about it.
Sure.
If the weather gets warm, if they're interested again. And that's all I have.
I guess I would piggyback that, not just on the west side, but is there something that's in place for all north, southeast, and west entrances to town?
And I would, you know, if there were other groups and it was appropriate, depending on, you know, if it's safe and all that, I don't know how they end up doing it, but I, I think, you know, I don't know what, we made a small donation to these groups, young folks, and I think that's wonderful. I mean, if it makes sense, I suppose...
So, I guess, if there's any of these, any commissioners that think of a group that might be interested or is approached to see if they might be interested in helping with that, that'd be a good civic duty. Appreciate that. I have a couple of things. Commissioner Wilkinson, mentioning the dip, brought to my attention a comment I had some time ago about a joint in the street at Haverhill and Twanda, where it goes from concrete to asphalt that evidently is giving a jolt. I haven't driven it for some time, but, and my response to that, that person was that there was some more work happening west of that intersection and maybe it could be addressed at that time, but you might, as we're driving around looking for, for dips and bumps, add that to the list to see how it's doing. Sometimes, well, from concrete to asphalt, sometimes we get... Cemetery maintenance, I got a question on that. I had a comment from, from somebody who questioned what needs to be done about headstones, maintenance, leveling those, making sure they stay level. Is it, is that, is that something that the city takes care of or is that something they need to monitor on their own?
The, we work on it as time permits, but you have outside people coming in and doing it, too. And so, they just kind of work with the cemetery people to do that. Today, if you put up a headstone, we require that a concrete footing essentially be put under it so it does, so it stays level. And so, it's mostly for older stones. We also, if you fence your plots in, that's yours to maintain, and so, there's a lot of discussion about it and a lot of variance, and there's not really one big, fast rule. But we do work on it when time permits.
Okay. I'm just curious who, that was, that was my, that was the question to me, is who, who does it? And if it's not the city, then they were going to go out and take care of it, but, but they would anticipate the city monitoring and taking care of that. Sales Tax Advisory Committee, they have met in January, have not reminded me, please? And they have seen a, a list of sales tax requests or is that what they're going to do at their next meeting?
They've seen city staff's request and the public's.
Any, anything we've received at this time has already been given to them. We actually received another one today that I need to email out to them, but...
Is the next meeting the ninth?
The ninth at 5:30.
Okay. What's the deadline for those requests?
We don't have a deadline typically. They like to see them at their first meeting in January, but we take them as they come in and then just by next Tuesday.
The ninth is when they're going to decide on how to allocate, is that correct?
They'll hear public comment at that meeting. In the history of the Sales Tax Committee since I've been with the city, most of the time they make the decision at that meeting. If there's not a lot of requests, this year there are a significant number of requests and so it might take them more than one meeting.
Okay, but, but, the, so the deadline would be before the ninth, right?
Yes.
Is anything, but there isn't a published deadline? I mean, do we want to state that it needs to be in by noon on the ninth or something?
I mean, we have groups that bring it that night to them and we haven't prior to this point ever published a deadline.
Okay, well, if they haven't published one, we won't insert that now this late in the game, but probably, at some point, we probably ought to draw a line, I would think. That way, your, your commission, your, our committee at least, has something they can read and be prepared for that night. Will we see that anytime ahead of them or we just wait till we get it back from the committee?
You'll see it after, after they've decided what they're going to recommend. You'll see it and then it'll come to you and, and it's in your calendar, your budget calendar. So, you'll have it before you see it. You'll have it as soon as they decide.
Okay. Thank you. So, the ninth, February 9th, for those watching to know that that's the Sales Tax Committee meeting day.
Believe it's in the paper already. It's been there once or twice already.
Perfect.
That was at 5:30, right?
Yes, here in the commission room.
Thanks.
That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, just to let everyone know, the informational meeting for the paving projects on the next commission meeting will be February 10th at 5:30 and 6:00. And anybody that has questions can call and talk to Amanda or Scott in the Engineering Department and they'll help out with that. We have a list of items for your quarterly priority update. These are the items that you guys decided would be on your priority list during your term back in July, beginning with your high priorities. The water sales to the west, staff are continuing to investigate new opportunities. The Parks and Rec Master Plan, the proposed plan is going in front of the City Commission at the end of February for adoption. Smaller items are being discussed by staff right now with the Sales Tax Committee and some local civic groups in order to garner some funding and get those things started. The core area plan, a request has been made for $100,000 from the Sales Tax Committee to fund that development plan. The group is going to meet later this week to finish up that RFQ for that plan. Roads, we have on the agenda for this year, the paving of Locust, Gouda, and West Central. Requests are in for Oak and Griffiths, those are what you'll hear at your next meeting. And we'll also continue our mill and overlay program. Collaboration between economic development entities. We worked together last year to develop one community calendar. They continue to meet and support each other's events. Your medium priorities, first off, the land bank, as Scott discussed earlier, information for the land bank is ready for a work session whenever you guys are ready. Personnel development and recruitment, we're currently working on a core strengths training for every employee, which will help us with project planning and conflict resolution. We continue our partnership with the Workforce Center in order to get the best possible candidates and have recently attended a workforce training on reentry. Connectivity and technology, we're just waiting on further direction from the commission on that and have a feeling that'll come up during budget. We continue work on community image. The league just announced their 2016 Kansas Hometown Showdown Contest. It kind of goes along with the March Madness and so we're looking for pictures to submit for that and there will be voting on Facebook, so make sure you watch City Hall's Facebook page. Your low priorities, continue citywide housing development. Scott talked earlier about the 12 housing permits from last year and the NRP approval, so those are all going well, and then the MIH grant that we received. Increasing dining options, we're working on some options at Prairie Trails right now. Airport development, there are no current plans for development, however, all the tea hangars are full and there are 12 planes in multi-story right now, so that's doing well. And then, educational facilities, which was your last item, and staff are taking part in the committee discussing a bond for new elementary schools right now. Any questions? That was a lot at one time, though. The only other thing we have, we need to ask for an executive session this evening for the discussion of legal matters.
Back to that, before we go to the next session, I do have a quick question. Land bank, you say we're at a point where we can have that as a work session, works, upcoming work sessions, we've got, I think we've got one coming up on Lake, Lake Dab Discussion and some of how that's allocated. Is land bank something we can do next after that or what's, what's on your agenda, what's, what needs to be talked about?
For us, it's just being driven by your priori, priorities. And I think that the, the only one left that I remember right at this moment was the Lake Dab. And so, it's, it's when you're ready to do it.
And, and the lake one, you've had some discussions with the, with the investment, which interests managing investments, correct? And we'll be able to report on how that's doing.
Yeah, and they're ready to come as well and things are...
Oh, they are, okay. It might be good to have them here for that work session, though.
And so, you can tell us when you're ready to have it?
When is our next work session?
I mean, you're, you're...
You don't have one s...
You don't have any scheduled. Your normal is, would be next Wednesday. Wednesdays have been kind of tough here lately and you've gone to, I think, Tuesdays, the last two of them, but it's whenever you want and your, your normal one is this next Wednesday. You have been having them, you've had two of them a month for several months because you had a bunch of things you wanted to hear about. And so, it's really, when you're ready, we're ready. I could do 16th or 17th.
I can, too. Let's plan on the 17th, would be better.
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
Does that work for everyone else?
One day? At four?
One day of the week.
That'll be late.
To Wednesday?
I'd like to get back to Wednesdays if we can, that'd be great.
And, and that'll be two commission meetings in a week? Because you have your next commission meeting that week as well, on the 15th. You skipped the, your, your normal work session would be the 10th.
Yeah, I can't do the 10th. I can't do that.
So...
I can't do that either.
As long as you're okay with two in one week?
Will, the commission?
I am, if everyone else is.
One day on your schedule?
Yeah. I think it's something we need to be, be, I like to keep these movements, so...
And you want to do...
Do you want to hear about, which one do you want to hear first? Do you want the Lake Dab first one or do you want the Lake Bennett?
Yeah.
Okay. If the bank is unable... If the bank is unable to make that date?
If the bank is unable to make that date?
Are you okay with switching?
We'll have a land bank discussion.
Okay.
How about that?
I like it.
So Gouda Springs is going to move forward now?
I think it's at the end of this month. That it's going to get lowered?
Yeah, the, um, Southern Star Gas is working on a, it's a pretty significant project for them to lower the gas line and get it out of the way of our new, of our proposed street. February twentieth, if I recall right, is the date, they're going to have a bypass in place and lower the line, and it'll be quite a bit of activity out there while it's going on. Should have to bring in, leave a couple semi trucks loads full of natural gas just in case, and.
Is the city going to build that road, or is it going to go out for bid?
It's already gone out for bid. So SBS is going to do the work.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on management reports? Executive session for reasons of?
Legal matters.
Pardon me?
Legal matters.
Legal matters.
Discussing.
Okay, so how much, how much time?
Ten minutes.
Ten.
Ten minutes?
Cool.
So how about we reconvene at, I don't think we're going to be able to get back there, right? I thought we reconvene at?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Seven thirty-five. Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session and reconvene at seven thirty-five.
I move to go into executive session for legal matters and to reconvene at seven thirty-five.
Second.
Move to second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Prose same sign, motion carries, move.